I call the Menifee Council Workshop to order. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember August, Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Denver. And Mayor Mann.
Here.
I'll note that Councilmember Edgerton's not here tonight.
Marvelous. Trustee Zimmerman, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations tonight for our workshop unless, City Manager, do you have anybody you need to introduce today, tonight, today, this afternoon?
No, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments for us this afternoon?
We do, one.
Please proceed.
Bill Zimmerman.
I'm sorry, we have two yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council and staff. Bill Zimmerman, I wanted to kind of come and felt a little compelled to share something. I know tonight's kind of a visioning meeting. It sounds like it's got a new name here, Legacy. And that's a good thing because it sort of ties to what I want to talk about. I was fortunate to be able to attend one of the very first visioning meetings. George Wentz was there sticking post-its on the wall. We also had a joint session that I was able to be part of as a planning commissioner. And also, there was another one held over at the college a couple of years ago. All of those resulted in some great things. Now, we're here, we're seven years old, and there's something that I haven't really seen a whole lot of as part of the purview of this council. And it has to do with Menifee Valley Historical Association and things that are happening with our historic group. I've been following along with Marietta, excuse me, and Temecula. When they got to be about seven years old, they started talking about historic preservation, trying to preserve the cultural heritage that they had. Fortunately for them, they had old towns to spend a lot of money to fix up. We don't have that. But we do have memories. We do know the locations of the mines, the schools, the post offices, the farmers that were here, the pioneers, even Native Americans. And so, tonight, you guys are going to be talking about things in the future. And I think right now, at our seven-year period, is a great time for you to consider adding a component to your thoughts and as far as things that the city could be doing at this point. And I want to tell you quickly, I met with Supervisor Ashley about a year ago. He said, "Bill, Menifee has a great historic association with the people, but a lot of it's in their minds." He said, "We can't just have memories, we need to get that out there." And so, we reached out to the city and helped out by doing your Facebook page, Throwback Thursday, we're the ones providing those things. And it's kind of a symbiotic relationship. The city's web Facebook page gets tons of hits now, and we get a lot of awareness, and it's kind of what we are hoping to accomplish. Along those same lines, Supervisor Ashley said, "Bill, why don't you guys come up with something that I thought was a great idea?" And it's kind of putting some monuments out in the city in certain locations where those locations are, where we know that those pioneer families were. So, just to let you know, I'm going to be coming back here in a couple of months. We got a map already done, we got most of the legwork done. It's just a matter now of coming up with a final plan of how we're going to do this thing. It could be some rock monuments with a plaque on it, or it could be something as simple as a nice sign that says, "This was the site and the location." So, anyway, today, as you guys are doing your legacy workshop, I hope that you'll include that as part of your thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Zimmerman. Appreciate that.
And we have two other speakers. Louis Gerald Macy.
Mayor and City Council, I just found out about this meeting, and so, I'm not as prepared as I would like to be, but I still think it's important enough to attend and to express some of my ideas. I definitely support the historic concept. I think that we need to look at designing or promoting the construction of a civic center for the city of Menifee. I also would like to see plans for a museum. And within the museum, we could have exhibits of a historic nature, of pioneers, and even influential people that have been living in the city over the last 50 to 70 years. On a land use perspective, and I don't know if this would be the forum, is that I would like to see a traffic center, which would be for multi-modal transportation. And it would be, I propose, south of Newport and on the west side of the freeway, sort of parallel with Monsanto College Menifee branch. This transportation center could be designed that we could have posters and exhibits of various points of interest within the city of Menifee. And I also would like to see more attention given to some of our leaders, our first mayor, our first council. We should also look at a branding concept of naming of streets and landmarks for some of our influential citizens. Also, we might even be adventuresome, like some of the European cities. And I know that this may be a far-out idea, but at least could be thrown out for discussion. And that is, is that some of the major cities, I mean, major points of the city, we could have statues. And they could be of some of our citizens, such as Fred Twiman. And so, for trying to put together some of my comments in a very hurriedly manner, hopefully, these are some of the ideas that I've been kind of thinking about over the years. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Macy.
And next speaker, Peter Thorwath.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to speak briefly about two things. The first actually has to do with road safety. If we're talking about priorities, nothing is a higher priority than keeping ourselves and our loved ones alive. There are, as I imagine each of us know, a number of intersections that are just very dangerous, so I want to encourage you to look into, number one, trying to see if the lights and everything else are timed as well as they possibly can at these very busy intersections out here. And maybe have them checked again after construction begins, and maybe again three months after that, because having lights that are timed well matters quite a bit. I'd also like to encourage, during those super-busy periods, if the police are not doing something more important, just being there, that's where the traffic is, that's where the cars are, that's where people are making U-turns in all kinds of crazy ways that are eventually going to lead to a very serious collision. Related, one more time to safety, I'd like to say that the exit ramps from the 215 are only one lane as you get off the freeway, unlike the exits of our neighboring towns. At busy times every day, the Menifee exits get backed up, I just experienced it. So, what that meant is, I, like many other people, every day of the year, was one of the stopped cars in lanes of the freeway where all the rest of the cars and trucks are driving at least 60 miles per hour. I know both interchanges will be improved in time, but having stopped cars on a freeway is something that shouldn't be allowed one day longer. So, I urge you to have Caltrans either widen those exit areas, or perhaps mark the area proceeding the exit as exit only. It's a very dangerous situation to have a car stopped in the middle of a freeway that is otherwise going 60, 70, 80 miles an hour, completely shifting gears. I want to follow up on what this gentleman mentioned about branding. I know that the oak is the primary theme that was selected for branding. There are many, many other oak things up and down in Marietta and Temecula. It doesn't really have resonance if it's the same theme other people are using. So, I appreciate the consideration of making it an oak and an acorn, because we are really, as a young city, closer to an acorn than we are to a great oak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all those ideas and inputs. I think if you stay tuned and watch the presentation, you might be pleasantly surprised on a few things. Do we have any more speakers tonight?
No, sir.
Before I kick it to you, City Manager, to, I'm assuming that you're going to lead the discussion, lead us in this workshop, I just want to share that this is kind of a different process, and I know you're going to talk about it a little bit more, but what this is not, is, this is not from any of us sitting up here, an attempt to micromanage the City Manager or any staff member. This is to enhance, in my view, the general plan vision statements that we've had, all of some of the meetings that some of the speakers have participated in the past, captures those things, takes a look at what we've done and where we need to go, and how we're going to fund it. So, that's what the purpose of this workshop is, and I'm sure you'll hit on a few of those items as you go through your presentation. So, with that being said, Council, have any other opening comments before we kick it off? Mr. August?
Can I address one of the speakers?
Sure.
I'll address Mr. Macy's comment in my comments and my legacy items, but as far as Mr. Thor- Thor- Thorward goes. Last day was at, Mr. Mayor, when we ran the grant program for the police officers, that was Thursday or Wednesday?
Oh, yeah, last Thursday, I think.
And our fine Menifee Police Department, under a grant fund, organized several police officers to do some stops on Bradley Road. And I want to give the mayor credit for that, for bringing that to the police department's attention and directing those stops to be on Bradley. But it's an issue, and we've talked about it before, Mr. Mayor, that speed, traffic safety is a problem in the city, and we will be addressing it. We've talked to the police department about it, and that'll probably come up at a later mission. But I agree with you, that traffic safety is one of the biggest priorities in the city. So, you're right on that as far as that's concerned.
And I want to thank you, Mr. August, for those comments. I want to thank Mr. Johnson and Captain Judge and his team for setting that up so quickly, because they apparently had had it planned for a while. But I had a presentation to make at 6:30 a.m. at Paloma Valley High School with some of their business programs in there. And I went from there to a dental appointment at Glenn Martin's office there on Bradley. And as I went down Bradley, there was three squad cars, two motors, and all five of them had somebody pulled over, writing either warnings or tickets. So, thank you very much for getting on that, Captain Judge and team.
And may I add, Mr. Mayor, I always went to Sun City Hardware, I saw the same thing you did, and I couldn't leave Sun City Hardware until the police officers left.
Well, at least, well, at least it wasn't Mr. Denver when he was on his cellphone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. With that being said, Mr. Johnson, take her away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a truly different idea that we came up with. You know, we've done strategic planning for the last couple of years. I think since you became mayor, we really tried to focus on strategic planning and set out really things that we need to do on an annual basis. What this is, is it's a different kind of workshop, it's a different look, it's a different feel. So, some that are here may be disappointed in what we talk about, some may be excited about what we talk about, but I think the, I think the bonus is that we're actually having a discussion, an open session in a public meeting about some of these ideas that you have citywide and by district. I'm sorry that some didn't get the notification, we did a press release, we've talked about this at City Council for the last several meetings, and especially after we nailed down the date. So, a couple of things we're going to chat about tonight is the general plan vision for 2030. We're going to talk a little bit about 2014 accomplishments, we're going to review the CIP program, we're going to look at future considerations for CIPs, and then we're going to look at the council priorities as established by each one of you. So, the legacy workshop, the council's demonstrated, in my opinion, a high degree of leadership by requesting workshop in a public setting. It's not, it's difficult to get time to set aside to talk about some things that are really important to the city and get ideas and opportunities. As you all are elected, you have a group of folks who elected you, and you have a constituency, and they talk to you all the time. And at times, during council meetings, it's difficult to share that with staff, with each other, and with the public. So, I was up late one night, and I think this kind of sums in what we're doing here today. For one, to truly find out where he/she is headed, you must look at the future by knowing the past, being in the present, all while looking ahead. I know that seems like a conundrum, but what is a legacy? Webster's defines that as a gift transmitted or by or received from an ancestor or predecessor from the past, which this council is looking ahead. The council and its staff leaves a legacy by its actions, completed projects, and adherence to the vision the state in the general plan. So, what are we doing tonight? The council is going to openly discuss some items of importance, either citywide or by district. No item tonight will be more or less important than the next. The only difference between the items that are mentioned are, some are currently funded and some are unfunded. Staff will diligently, will take notes, the session's being recorded, we make sure we get all items listed, not just those on this presentation. The council may choose to prioritize some of these items for staff, either at the end or as we come back with a follow-up, but we'll return and provide quarterly updates of the legacy items once council provides directions on how they would like to do that. Do we do that as a future workshop? Is that a council presentation, or are those written reports, et cetera? Just to look back, the council has twice held strategic planning workshops in '13 and 2014. These are the following top priorities that were set from those previous workshops. It does not mean that this is not still your priority. These are legacy items we're talking about, and these are strategic priorities. Increased public safety, the infrastructure development project completion, specifically to identify and secure final funding for Scott Road and the I-215 interchange. If you'll recall, our top seven CIP projects, four of them are fully funded, and two of them are completed. There's, there was an economic development, a focus on new business, whatever that business was, whether it was restaurant, retail, commercial, land, industrial, the creation of a citywide community services department, and to finalize a payment management plan. So, this, in essence, is described, describes for Menifee 20 years from now and is adopted in the general plan on December 17, 2013. The essence of our city can be summed up in one word, community. All aspects of the general nature, ethnic, socioeconomic, diversity, functionality, and sustainability of the city ultimately tie back to and reinforce this fundamental notion. Over 20 years ago, 15 now, till we get to 2030, the city of Menifee incorporated with a straightforward and pivotal message, "By establishing low control of our government, we can provide, we can directly be accountable for the future of our community." The entrepreneurial spirit exhibited by the city's founders still resonates with us today. We are continually seeking new and innovative ways to enhance our community's quality of life. We've preserved our diverse mix of neighborhoods that provide an array of housing choices for a variety of life stages and lifestyles that is unparalleled in the Inland Empire. Our downtown is vibrant, complete with a community center that serves as the central facility of our annual community celebrations and a gathering place for a broad spectrum of interests and ages. We celebrate our historic and cultural resources, preserving and promoting the iconic resources and landmarks that are unique to our city. We are especially proud of our recreational and cultural programs, and our trails are local and regional assets. Our institutions of higher learning have created partnerships with our local and regional medical facilities, establishing a unique pairing of educational and medical services that in turn generate new jobs for our community. We have access to rail, bus rapid transit, local shuttle services, and are at the forefront in developing a citywide golf cart neighborhood electric vehicle plan to minimize vehicular trips that improve our air quality. We have consistently mandated high-quality development amenities and public services as a stipulation of growth in Menifee, prompting a continuing cycle of investment and reinvestment in our community. By commanding a high level of performance in all aspects of our city's operations, Menifee is a sought-after and safe place to live, work, and visit in the Inland Empire. I know it was a little tedious me reading that, but I wanted to remind all of us that that was set forth by the G-PAC, the Planning Commission, City Council, as our vision for 2030. So, when we talk tonight about how are we going to get there, we also need to look at where we are and where we've been and what accomplishments we've had along the way. We have to look back to the past, we have to be present in what we're doing, and we have to look to the future for these legacy items that we're talking about. I'm not going to spend a great deal of time going over each one of these, but we do continue to manage with great emphasis our positive culture at City Hall. Staff is solutions-oriented while following the municipal code. We have cross-departmental communication. We provided, I've provided all access to me and direct feedback. Employees are respected and treated as professional experts. Employees are held accountable for their responsibilities. A couple of things that I like to share openly, and I like to share in public now, but I share this with staff all the time, is we spend more time here with each other than we do at home with our families. And I think sometimes we forget that. And so, the idea is to create a positive environment here, because we want to thrive while we're here, and that's important. Doing a great job and enjoying it is important, too. And my goal has always been for us not to take ourselves too seriously, but obviously take our jobs, our effort, and our solutions very seriously. The last little tagline is, we live here every day, we spend our time here, our money here, our energy, our talent for this community, we just lay our heads to rest somewhere else. 2014 accomplishments, we increased the Menifee police force by one motor and two patrol officers, created new economic development outreach materials to connect with our commercial, retail, restaurant clients. We won a red carpet award for economic development through the Inland Empire Economic Partnership. We received an award from CalPIO for our Menifee Matters newsletter to connect with our residents. We have focused communication through press releases, Facebook, Twitter, and social media. We've now developed a Menifee University for Staff, which is a leadership goal of mine by partnering with Brandman University for Staff Leadership Seminars. We have one every, I think it's three months, where's Gina to give me a nod? And we actually have staff from Brandman come in here, they're doing a pilot program with us, it's free to us and to our staff, and it's a brown bag lunch, and it's been very, very good. We also have five in a row GFOA awards in excellence in finance reporting. We took receivership of the Case-Sinisaro Senior Center this year. We brought on a Murphy Ranch sports park and skate park online through the Brookfield Development. We held our first Christmas tree lighting at the new Menifee Town Center. We had a creation of Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Trails Commission, Trials Commission, as I wrote, but it's Trails Commission. Creation of the Senior Advisory and the Youth Advisory Committees, creation of the Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee. We've assisted in moving Line A, the Storm Jane Project, forward. We started a DIF study update, the first for the city, and should be completed in May for council consideration. We also began compiling and designing an annual report for the city's accomplishments. This is something I have done in another city for a specific department, but as you'll see on Wednesday night, when Captain Judge provides the annual report for the Police Department, Menifee Police Department, I'd like to do that for us, too, so that we can share with our residents what we've accomplished. We've had the completion of two of the city's first five-year, $100 million CIP projects, the Menifee Missing Link and the Newport Road Widening. We were able to secure $14.6 million through the RCTC Award of Funds for Newport I-215 Interchange. We were awarded Final Improvement Award for Bid just five, six days ago at the Board of Supervisors. So, that's green light, moving light speed ahead. We completed the Cherry Hills Median Landscaping. We're finalizing Scott Road plans and specs and acquiring Right-Away with the objective to make that shelf-ready project for the next RCTC funding cycle, which should be September, I believe, September through maybe December of this year. We don't know the exact date, but that's the guess. We've connected regionally with TUF and RCTC for returns on investments to build our infrastructure. We've gained leadership positions locally and statewide with Lead California Cities, part of the City Managers Department, the Vice Chair of that, statewide Lead Policy Committee I sit on, and recently, a Regional Emergency Services Committee through the county. We continue to do more with less, we have 83 projects currently in process. A quick review of our CIP for snapshot, seven items were approved by council, they're all underway. Newport Road Widening and Missing Link, as I mentioned before, are complete. The Newport I-215 Interchange, the bid was awarded. We look to start construction in about two and a half weeks, they're starting to mobilize. It doesn't mean that anything's been done out there, all the utilities have been relocated, and we're looking forward to a nice kickoff coming up here. The Scott I-215 Interchange is under Right-Away acquisition right now, finalizing the design so that we can make sure that we're ready for that competition to see if we get funded. We do have a continued partnership with the county that is going to continue our bid process and look to gain some additional money through RCTC. The Bradley Road overcrossing, we say it's in final design, it was, it was designed, but our city engineer decided that that needed to go back out, do a little bit more engineering on it, and try and get our cost down for us. So, that's where it's at now. Holland Road Overpass is in final design, and not sure when the EIR would begin, but I'm fairly confident, as soon as the final design is, that would kick off the EIR. McCall I-215 Interchange is in preliminary design, we're looking at where the landing zones, how wide it's going to be, what impacts they're going to be, and we're going to get an estimate on the project cost. And then, the Sun City Median Landscape improvements, we're drafting specifications for bid. What I mean by Sun City Median Landscape, now that we finished Cherry Hills, and we did the Bradley Pathway Project, we're moving north on Cherry Hills, from Cherry, between Cherry Hills and McCall and Sun City to revitalize that. The goal was, if you recall, our plan was to make those improvements around that Sun City Shopping Center and give that Cherry Hills Plaza a revitalized lift that the city can say that we're supporting that environment and that economic viability there by making the improvements around on the medians. The new opportunities are inclusion and ongoing CIP. We've had some discussions before in some other strategic planning meetings last year in '14 and '13. We talked about installation of Newport Median Planting, that's done. We talked about park improvements for Laual Marsh, Pete Peterson, Laual, Laudara, and Nova, those are all complete. We have three traffic signals in design, Holland and Bradley, Aldergate and Menifee, Antelope and Garbani, those are all three in design and should be hopefully starting installation in summer of '15, that's this summer. Newport Road paving from Haun to Bradley. We have a current agreement through the development agreement with the Regent Town Center. They are setting aside funds to help us do that as part of their conditioning and part of the development agreement, and we're working through a TUF agreement right now to secure some fee credit that they would be awarded with this project. The idea is, we did such a phenomenal job on the east side of Newport, from Antelope to Menifee Road in preparation of the I-215 interchange, and then you come on this side and the west side, we need some help over here. So, we're attempting to design the same thing from Haun to Bradley on this side. We want those three lanes of traffic to flow as smooth and as comfortable as the east side does, so we're in design on that.
And, sorry, I'm interrupting, but in your defense, you had a pretty nice median out there until about a week after installation, somebody ran into it and knocked the sign down, so you're doing a good job.
Okay, thanks. You notice we didn't put that one back up? It needs to be fixed a little bit, but thank you. The improvements to Case-Sinisaro Senior Center, our exterior landscaping and interior improvements, that's out for RFP currently. So, we're doing a lot with future identified CIPs. These are some new opportunities to be included in an ongoing CIP for discussion. I think one of the things that council has talked about before is, we have a myriad of things out there that need to get fixed. We, and we need to be solutions-oriented, we need to have a plan, we need to not only identify what those are, but then try to secure funding for those. So, these are some that staff has been talking about for a while that we don't have funding for. However, we did want to make sure that we identified them. The overcrossing at Marietta and Salt Creek, that's an unfunded future project. The overcrossing at Normandy and Salt Creek, basically, all the, all the overcrossings at Salt Creek need to be fixed. It's very difficult to drive down into a Salt Creek channel and not have the road flood out. Right turns at Holland and Marietta, paving of Scott Road Interchange, we talked about this as an interim fix, and we've been working with Caltrans and the District Eight Director, who unfortunately is retiring, I'm thinking like next week, so we need to get on the new person that gets identified. They're going to assist us in repaving the interchange now as an interim fix. If you've driven over it, and I'm sure you do every day or every other day, it's very alligatored and pieces are coming off. Unfortunately, that's a Caltrans project. If we were to go out there and start doing some paving and ask forgiveness later, we would be in trouble. So, we're trying to steer away, but trying to get their, trying to get them to see that that is desperately needed.
Yeah, we don't want to upset Caltrans, not since they gave us the green light on Holland Road Overcrossing and said, "Well, we've already reviewed it, we'll stay out of your way, city."
The completion of two lanes of paving on Marietta Road from Ethan Act to McCall, the completion of Briggs Road from McCall to Heritage High School, creation of a McCall Medical Corridor, this is something that we've been talking about for a while, and quite frankly, it takes a lot of time, energy, and effort to plan this out, but the idea would be that that would be an entryway. Excuse me, I'm probably losing my voice, so I'm going to try and talk faster. That would be an entryway not only to the Menifee Valley Hospital, but it would provide us some other medical opportunities to attract here. And then, the medians would be designed in a way that would make it look, as you come off the freeway, that you're coming up to Medical Corridor. I don't know how many of you have been to the New Palomar Hospital on Citricato down in Escondido, but they did a marvelous job. I don't know how many of you have been to the new Palomar Hospital on Citricato down in Escondido, but they did a marvelous job out in front of that of really taking care of how you access the hospital and just the way that it looks. And I think if we could do that in that corridor, it would be pretty phenomenal. Also improving our city entryways with monuments and new landscaping, that is part of our general plan. We've outlined those. I think there are eight entryways into the city. And we just need to start setting some funds aside for that. Developing, funding, constructing Evans Craig Park. It's sixteen to twenty acres. It's probably twenty acres, but there's about four acres of bio swale in there or natural habitat that we would need to move around. Here are some more future C I P projects that are unfunded opportunities. We know that the Highway seventy-four Ethan Act Corridor is coming. The county has pledged to move that along as quickly as possible. We want to be with them lockstep to make sure that that happens. Talk about a citywide master drainage plan. There are several different areas in our sub-communities of Menifee that have obviously desperately needed flooding areas to control. So as part of a greater citywide system, that would take care of those issues. Obviously, the sewer system for Quell Valley with the partnership with the M W D, finalizing the pavement management plan. We talked about this to council a couple of times. I've mentioned the issues with the gas tax and the statewide infrastructure problems for roads. We've also talked about our budget and what we have and what we can afford, but we really need to finalize that and bring that back to council. We've talked for years about the possibility of realignment of Holland Road at Marietta Road. That's a horrible T intersection, which turns into a Z intersection, if I could call it that. I don't know if that's engineering speak, but it reminds me of a Z as you go west, south, west. McCall Boulevard East heading to Menifee Road. You'll notice there's four lanes up to the top of the hill and then there's just a two-lane road right by the school that's highly impacted. You get closer to Menifee Road and you've got four lanes again down there, so we need to make that connection. Scott Road Widening West from Han to the city's eastern border. That's with the Wildomar and County Partnership. Wildomar has kicked that off with an E I R to try and do four of the six lanes. That will be a six-lane road coming all the way from fifteen to two fifteen at some point. We also talked about a MetroLink Station in Menifee along seventy-four and again, some of these are legacy items that may never come to fruition. But if we don't identify them and keep them in front of us, we may miss an opportunity. So our capital improvement program is successfully underway. We have projections for sales tax and property tax. They continue to perform well, but our expenses for public safety exceed those revenue increases. So we're going to need to figure out how we're going to determine that and settle that on an even plane so that we can continue to grow our police force. There's new capital improvement projects are coming to increase the quality of life of Menifee residents. Talked about City Hall Facility Improvements or Expanded Location. I've been talking for four years now to Ron Hartley, who owns this building and whose nephew owns this property. And who owns A M R, Ron Hartley behind us, Hub Enterprises, about moving A M R to another location. So that we can move into that facility as well as an interim movement till we get the City Hall built at some point.
Sounds like a good tenant for Commerce Point.
Hey, might be. The new City Hall.
How about A M R?
That's what we thought, yeah. How about it? Yeah, perfect. We've had our first year of our Community Services Department. Mr. Lennox and his staff have done a phenomenal job in really identifying the things that we need to solve. The issues we need to fix and how to move our city and our Community Services Department to connect more with the community directly, we hope. Identify and secure final funding for Scott Road Interchange. I mentioned that before. Obviously, we want to keep that on the forefront and of course, the pavement management plan.
Can I interject something about that real quick to get on the council's radar? Do you mind? Can I ask that now?
Absolutely.
Because the bid came in for the Newport Road Interchange so low compared to what we were all planning, seventeen point two million dollars worth. I realize that there's going to be some change orders or there always are, but I would like to have support from the council to do a resolution. From this council to the County of Riverside and R C T C to ask that they reprogram those bid savings to the Scott Road Interchange. Thereby lessening the amount of money that we need to find by reprogramming whatever might be left over. Would that be possible? Or would that disrupt the force in the county?
I don't think it would disrupt the force in the county, but I did receive late information on that, that they're going to use their funding first. So in doing that, our funding will be last on the project.
You mean the money that Menifee set aside for the project?
Well, we brought seventeen point eight million and we also used that seventeen point eight million to leverage fourteen point six million out of R C T C. So when you really talk about what this council set up by setting aside that seventeen million with the trip financing, we gained a thirty, thirty-one million dollars.
Did I hear you say?
So the-
That that decision is ours when that time comes?
The decision of the remaining funds would be ours to make because there are funds.
Okay, got it.
So what the county has in T U F money and DIF money and C F D holdover money is going to be spent first.
Okay, that's great news.
That's why we also had our city engineer actively hire the project manager. Because we knew that at the end of the day, the money that's going to be spent last is coming out of our pocket. So we hired what we believe is a very capable project manager to cut down those expenses. So out of the forty-six million, forty-six million dollar project, is that correct, Jonathan?
Forty-eight point four.
Forty-eight point four, thirty-one million is for construction. So most of that forty-eight, most of the remaining between the thirty-one and the forty-eight has already been spent, correct? You got design, you got plans, you got E I R, you got all that stuff. So what we're really coming up against is our own savings, which we want to make sure that we control desperately. And so if there is savings, we hope there will be, we will come back to council and we'll ask for that to be reprogrammed.
Thanks, but a great answer.
So the seventeen millions are even spent, is what you're saying?
If you take the thirty-one million, what we're working on now is the construction management. So with all that, I've set the table for council to talk about their individual items for their districts. And the objective is to go in order by district and for you to share those items and we'll desperately be taking notes. And it's that time, Mr. August.
Well, thank you, Rob. I want to thank the council for being here tonight. I have a rather long list here. I'm going to redesign and rebuild the city tonight with my legacy items. I'll try to do it in five minutes. So anyway, Cherry Hills Plaza Revitalization Plan. I came to the council with the support of our mayor and to look at the Cherry Hills Plaza. For most of you, it's a Sun City Plaza over there. And we've had several meetings with several of the property owners over there and we're making some progress. We kind of would like to revitalize that and see some economic, if not social, potential. Add a little bit to it to make it more custody friendly, pedestrian friendly, a better place to go and also increase our sales taxes over there. So the city's in the process, I believe, and it's not going fast enough for me, but the city's in the process of conducting a study to see what the revenues over there will be. Compare them to some other economic and commercial centers around the city to see if there is not potential there, to see if we can make some, bring some effort over there. That's going to, would that be about right, Mr.?
Yes, sir. We've held our first initial meeting. Mr. August, just to give you some credit.
Yeah, oh, no.
Walked around the Cherry Hills Plaza and invited folks to a meeting and got most of the, what we believe are the stakeholders or the owners of the facilities there. We all came into a room and we kind of talked about the Cherry Hills Plaza and what types of things would be needed to be done to drive some economic development in there. And we're going to meet again. I think we have a couple more meetings set aside. And then it's a report to council to see what this council is willing to do in the form of the Business Incentive Ordinance. To incentivize and entice the owners of those various properties to put their own money back into that place.
That's, that's correct. One other thing, I'm going to tie this into the golf courses right now, North Course over on McCall and California Golf and Arts. The idea, I don't know what the future of golf and how popular it's going to be in the future, plus California Golf and Arts is kind of run down, in my opinion. I used to play there and it's really getting run down over there. That particular golf course offers the city some challenges that other golf courses may not. There is so much property over there. For somebody to come in and just do the golf course, it is so wide and expansive. It's almost twice as large as new golf courses that are being built today. So that presents some challenges to anybody who wants to come over there. But envision, I kind of envision the golf cars, if we can get somebody and show some interest over there. Imagine people being able to come down and play maybe a weekend of golf and stay at our new local hotel. And being able to walk to the plaza to nice restaurants. How does that sound, Mr.? Great plan.
I'm in.
Okay, all right. So that's kind of, we tie the golf courses into that. But the difficulties with some of our, North Course, North Course is not near as challenging. It's a real nice course. They might be having some, a few financial problems over there, but a much easier problem to handle. But it is a nice executive golf course. The mayor and I have played there many times with his mother and it's a nice, easy golf course. Good for seniors. The other one presents different challenges. The-
You have something to say?
I didn't want to interrupt you, but it reminds me of J C Resorts or the Lawrence Welk where there's a golf course on one side. There's a par three executive. And there used to be homes there that were age restricted and now it's kind of more of a, now that J W, J C Resorts took that over, it's more of a of a destination, of a vacation opportunity. So maybe there's somebody we can talk to there.
And one last thing about the plaza over there. Some parts of the plaza are absolutely miserable. Mostly the center around the post office, probably the parking lot between Abe's and Stater Brothers. But I was over there the other day and I almost called the city and somebody had complained to me about this big pothole over there. And it is private property and we pretty much try to stay out of their business. But I'm probably going to be sitting down talking to you, Mr. City Manager, and say, hey, look, some of this stuff is getting a little dangerous. Maybe we might want to send safety over there and say, clean up your act, tighten up those guys over there. And let the city make an impression on them that they should stand up and take care of their property a little bit more. Mr. Maisy, the Events Center, that was on my list and believe me, this one's probably going to have to fall out of the sky. But I, some people have said to me that Menifee is kind of a featureless city without an identity. And so I said, well, what can we do? So I was kind of thinking and visualizing something, a multi-use center, civic center, as you called it. With perhaps we could have concerts, jamborees, city functions, also seminars and things like that. Would be a great thing for the city. Somebody was supposed to be here tonight to mention one of their legacy, one of the residents and talk about, you know, a regional park. He's not here yet, but when he does, maybe as far as the location goes, we could possibly look at a community center or an events center around that park. I'd rather see it around the center of the city, but I'm not sure that we have the land use, the property available for that. So that's kind of a pie in the sky thing right now, but we're thinking along the same lines for something like that. I think it'd be a great asset to the city. Three hundred thousand population in the valley, right in the center of it. Menifee has their convention center that they can use and people can come to from all over the area. So we're thinking about it.
I don't know how Rob and the staff can come up with it, but you have until six months to do it, okay?
All right. Real quick, revitalize, we talked about the golf courses. Assist golf, North Course, we've already talked about that. Infrastructure items, Sun City Median improvements, the city's doing a fine job on that. You'll probably, and as Mr. Johnson already stated, the medians on Sun City Boulevard are going to be worked on in the future fairly soon. So here's one point that we like to make to the owners over in the Cherry Hills Plaza. The city's kind of putting up, investing some time and money in trying to improve that area. And as I said before, we're probably going to tweak up our pressure a little bit on them to put some time and effort and more responsibility on them to improve that facility over there. McCall Interchange, we've already talked about that. It's in design. We're designed, of course, it's going to depend on what kind of development, the medical development up on McCall. We'll be talking more about the landing pads, the lanes, the egress and off the freeways and things like that. But that'll probably be predicated on the type of development we see over there, I would imagine, Mr. City Manager. The complete the Bradley Bridge over Salt Creek. We've been talking about this for several years. And my friend, Mr. The City Manager, just took away two point six million dollars from the project. We're looking for a little bit cheaper design perhaps, but don't worry, we'll get it back and it'll be really, really nice, right, Mr. City Manager?
I think it was four hundred thousand, wasn't it?
Oh, four hundred.
And we only put that aside in a special restricted fund and if it's not used, it goes right back in it.
Okay, is it back yet?
Not yet.
Okay, all right. Still restricted?
Still restricted, okay. Continue to fund the creation of Menifee Animal Shelter. As I understand, we've been working on this for a year. We put aside about twenty-five thousand dollars towards that effort for an animal shelter. That's a long ways away, but it's something that can greatly benefit the city because it is a, it's a high-cost item for the city. So it would be better for our community and our animals and the population, animal owner population. Here's one that I'm going to have to almost defer to my colleagues up here because we have lots of experience in schools here, Mr. Mann, the mayor and Mr. Denver. And someone talked to me, called me up the other day and talked to me about, gee Greg, we'd really like to see school unification in the city. Right now, I think what we do is we have the Paris Valley Unified School and the Menifee Elementary Unified School District, something like that. But our high schools are under the management of Parish Unified Schools. So this person said, well, gee, Mr. August, why don't we talk to, look at school unification? Because people coming into the area from outside with children, families with children, would like to probably, they do ask about the schools. And I have a background in real estate as Mr. Denver does. So they do ask about the schools and it would be nice for the developers and the city to be able to say, we are under one unified school district. Consistency, consistency, trust and confidence in the school system. Right now, and I'm not saying anything against parents, but it's a little confusing to people that perhaps, you know, the politics of one district over the politics of Menifee. Menifee has ideals, reflections, you know, that they like to represent for the city of Menifee. So that is a problem. That's a problem that we'll be looking to in the future. It's my understanding and talked to some of the reps that that is not going to be the case for a while. And if one of my colleagues would like to address that, they certainly can at this time as to why it's not going to happen soon. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll, there are nine criteria, statewide criteria handed down by the California Department of Education for unification. Right now, six of those nine are met. The remaining three deal with finances and enrollment numbers and then some debt structure. So once those three things actually are taken care of, then the unification will actually go forward. And what I'd propose to you, if you wanted to make a motion on it or at least get a, is to, we could certainly do a resolution of support of the unification process. And bring it back on a council meeting and then have that go to both school districts and just let them know that we support the unification process.
Can we do that now?
Yeah, I believe we can.
All right. Do you want me to finish my comments or do it right now?
Sure.
And I'll do that. Remind me to do that, please. Develop a TV channel. That came in from one of the residents in the city and that was just so that the citizens of Menifee can be more informed of what goes on at the city. It's a good idea and I do know that the city has been working on it. It's on your radar screen and on your agenda to take care of that. So I have a feeling that will get done and soon, not soon, just whenever you want. Okay. Expand options, transportation for seniors. I can report to you that R T A, who, somebody was, Mr. Maisy, was that you talking about transportation? R T A, we're very, very much on the, we're on the outer periphery. We're kind of in the center in a suburb- We're kind of in the center in a suburban area as far as R T A goes. They're expanding route service, looking at our population, how it grows. Do we wanna become more transportation-specific for the seniors? So they're keeping an, an eye on us. They, uh, they are in the process and probably will approve on, in July, a dial-a-ride plus for our seeing disabled seniors over the age of 65. So, uh, transportation hub, uh, right now, I see their transportation hub in Paris and it, we're kind of, everything to me from, from where we are right now kind of feeds through us into Paris. And to me, that seems to be where the hub is. But R T A is very, very supportive. They're a great organization and they're looking at us expand. And as we do, they'll be offer, offering us up, uh, all kinds of different options for transportation. So I'm, I'm very, uh, positive with that organization. Via, so we, I talked about the dial-a-ride and the bus routes. They're always in the process, again, looking at our, uh, population increases to expand route service for the city. Right now, it's really kind of residential and we, we don't see, it, of course, it's more intense. The closer you get to Riverside and farther away from Riverside, it's gonna become more intense. But I, I foresee the day when we'll have, uh, all kinds of, uh, all the buses we need down here in transportation, hopefully for the seniors as well. I think that's it.
All right.
Oh, wait.
Oh, one.
Forgot my resolution.
Go ahead and, uh, why don't you go ahead and ask for that and see if we got a second to bring that back?
All right, uh, I would ask for, uh, someone to second a resolution on, for the council and the city to support, uh, unification.
Okay. Is there a second? Anyone?
Second.
All right. Then you got consent to bring that back in the form of a resolution and we'll deliver that to both school districts and they can include it in their package to the state. Um, before, before Councilmember Lees Meyer goes, just to, uh, I sit on the R C T C and now that the metro link, the Paris Valley Line is completely funded and, uh, under construction, the next leg is the, what's going to be, it's preliminarily called the San Jacinto Line. And that will come through the railroad tracks that are in the northern part of our city. And so that's about, latest estimate I saw is eight years away. And then simultaneously, they're doing, and, uh, they're doing planning for the, the line to continue southward to Marietta and Temecula, which is another 12 or 14 years down the line. But the, the R C T C has plans for those things and they've actually expended money on the design of those things and the economic impacts for them.
Thank you.
Speaking to the, your point and Mr. Maisy. Okay.
Well, on, on my radar, um, obviously I'm new here to the council, so, uh, more of this is, uh, kind of just a brain dump and probably warrant some more discussion on some of these items. But, uh, I'll just start cracking. We obviously know that public safety is our number one concern and, um, you know, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with how we deal with our contract with R S O. And, um, would just like to explore that contract a little bit more and see what other, uh, what other options we have to help get us closer to that one per thousand, um, criteria that we all try to, you know, try to get to. And, and in general, just have more of a presence. There's a lot of, I mean, I, I, I always go back to the days when I was standing on the street corners out there campaigning and, uh, you know, I was out there for six, seven, eight hours sometimes waving signs and I'd see one car over about an eight-hour period. So it was pretty glaring to me that the presence wasn't there. I, I like to, I like where we're headed right now. I'd like to continue adding motor officers and, um, you know, try and have them on some sort of circulation pattern around the school zones at peak times. One of the things I noticed, um, with the elimination of the busing, uh, which happened obviously a long time ago, parents are, are all now bringing their kids to school and, um, it's creating a lot of traffic congestion. And, uh, in my mind, maybe some unmitigated impacts to our roads as a result of losing the busing. Uh, that's one thing I did wanna kind of discuss a little bit more. So, you know, I, I'm not sure how the state mandates, um, you know, parking requirements and loading and unloading requirements with the schools. And it's just my perception that there's a lot of parents that are coming and going to school zones and it gets very, very congested. Obviously, we had buses, there wouldn't be as many cars there. A lot of parents making unsafe movements during dropping and picking up. How do we make the schools more accountable, um, that sort of thing? Along in the lines of public safety, uh, seen a lot of street racing and what I'm calling vandalism as being donuts. Just, this, every intersection in town is laden with donuts. It's pretty obvious who the majority of those people are. If we just start jamming people up, you know, I don't know if that's something we can do, just start jamming people up and, and starting to create a presence, you know, letting people know that, hey, we're out here. And, uh, you know, we're, we're watching the, we're watching the street racers and all the little, you know, the kids out there. They're causing accidents and things like that. Maybe on Newport Road on the east and west end of town, we, we add some speed signs. I remember a meeting a while back, we talked about adding some speed signs to some of the neighborhoods. And, um, I think those, those would be two great places to have them, right when you come into town, on, on each side of the town. People would just checks and balances, right when you come into town, you, you know that you're being watched. I, I wanna review some of the fire engine needs. And now, I said paramedic on every engine, this is, this was, uh, some of my campaign ideas, but I, I realize now that we do have a paramedic on every engine. But I just wanted to explore, um, some other options. Again, same with the contract issue, what, what are our contract options with fire? And, um, as we move forward, start doing some strategic planning with fire needs and maybe look at having another station in the northwest part of town to offset the high call rate of our senior corps. As we all know, the senior corps, I believe, I think I heard, has the highest in the nation as far as response.
Not quite. Three.
Number three in the nation.
Three in the nation, one in the state.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's crazy.
Station number seven.
I mean, if you, if you think about that, I mean, we have what, five stations in town? Four, four or five stations in, four stations in town? You get one call in the corps and now they're getting, there's another engine getting redirected from 76. And then you get another one from 68. All of a sudden, all the engines could be in one part of our city, leaving, leaving a huge gap in coverage for the other parts of our city.
We're all dying over there, so I don't know.
Hey, maybe we just need to tax the seniors more.
I'll go, I second.
Yee.
That was a joke. So along the lines of code, of, uh, public safety comes code enforcement. And, um, I, I think, uh, last budget cycle, we had a slot in there for another code enforcement officer. And I'd like to discuss that with the council and, and talk about bringing that back in there. Maybe we divide the code enforcement duties between districts.
Just to give you a quick, uh, update, we do have an approved position for code enforcement that went, uh, unfilled because I had to cut it to balance the budget. But it is an approved position that we can bring on should we be able to find money for.
Okay, excellent. Effectiveness, um, I'd like to, as Councilman Denver suggested a couple of meetings back, start turning to more of a proactive approach. And one of the things I'd mentioned was having a code enforcement ad hoc committee where we might develop a proactive punch list or a ranking system for staff to work from. And, and we might prioritize, uh, what the council wants to see enforced. One of the tools we could do is to, uh, you know, to increase some legal enforcement on code cases so that cases are closed and issues are resolved, is to, um, establish a compliance board or nuisance abatement board. One of the things I've had some experience with is over in Lake Elsinore, their nuisance abatement board, where code cases go to a board and they're, you know, rendered decisions pretty quickly. Code cases don't lag on forever out there. Could result in receivership and the city taking action to abate the issue. It's basically just a swift reaction on code enforcement. One of the, one of the things I've, I've dealt with is, uh, on code cases, you know, you know, sometimes a code case will, will be issued by an officer or, um, you know, maybe we picked up some code cases from the county. We, we, we had those cases at one time and they were all swept under the rug or they're all gone for some reason. I'm not sure whatever happened with all that. But a lot of work was done by the county before and we might look into, um, where, where those cases went. I'm not sure, you know, whatever happened to those, how come they weren't resolved? But I'd like to see maybe a policy that, that a code case stays with the code enforcement department. Again, this is a discussion item, kind of, not sure how we, how we do it now, but I, I would like to think that a code case is opened by a code officer and it isn't closed. It isn't resolved until that code officer closes the case. I don't know if it comes internally or can you, can you help me understand that?
My understanding is the case does stay with the code enforcement officer until it's resolved. So I don't have any other information about that not happening.
Okay, great. So I, I know, I know some of the code enforcement stuff sounds pretty hard and swift, but again, it's, a lot of it's discussion. We, we've kind of had, been pretty relaxed on code cases. And there are a lot of issues in Quail Valley and in some of the rural areas that I would like to try and start being more proactive on. It gives our city a better image, uh, helps drive up the property values in the neighborhoods and, you know, helps basically make Menifee a better place. On the planning and development side, um, I'd like to explore a comprehensive G I S interface that is connected to record data, maybe public works, maps, plans, um, different utility plans. At one time, we used the R C L I S and that was a pretty nice tool. It brought up all the record information, uh, from, from record maps, parcel maps. And maybe we could even take this a step further where it's integrated with something the water district might have so we know where some of our utility lines are. As we continue to build our city, developers can come to the city and say, I wanna build a project over here. What's over here? And, and it's all linked together so that we can give somebody a nice, comprehensive packet and it says, here's what you got and here's how you, here's how you move forward. Project submittal accountability, um, one of the things, I believe it's Marietta does, when you submit a project over there, it has a checklist that, that you follow along through every department. Every department signs off on it and when it's done. I don't know that we do that here.
We have the same sheet that we hand out at submittal.
Sorry.
We have the same sheet we hand out at submittal.
Okay.
That's our application process.
Okay. And then, uh, so every department signs off on it, it's always with the same.
Good, okay.
Haven't seen it yet.
It's at the front counter, we'll grab one on the way out.
Thank you. Bill Zimmerman and I had talked about this a long time ago. Citywide design guidelines with a focus on the varied nature of the city. The rural, the urban, the senior corps, Highway 74, different chapters. As we've moved along, we've, we've discussed, well, maybe, you know, doing design guidelines costs a lot of money. Maybe we design projects and we design parts of our city as we move forward. But, um, it's, it's becoming increasingly harder to do that. And without the guidelines in place, the development community doesn't know what we're looking for with respects to some of those designs. We do have some of that in our general plan, uh, but just better design guidelines, um, to help identify some of those areas. Specifically in the rural area, I'd like to, you know, explore a, a rural design guideline. The community of Lake Buenauevo or, um, the wine country template, they both have, uh, pretty comprehensive setups where, you know, they have their street sections laid out. You have your, your setback trails and your, and your fences and, and areas for your horses. And it helps with the trail connectivity and it helps kind of distinguish the different parts of our city. Especially, you know, with Lake Buenauevo, it's got, uh, you know, all the, all the horse and agrarian themes. Want to streamline the process with our city jurisdictions that are out of our city, uh, like fire, flood, water, gas, Edison. Maybe even discuss having a fire staffer in-house. Plan check is, is pretty cumbersome for some of the development community. Gotta take plans up to the county and we'd like to see if we can wrap that up and, and bring it into, bring it in-house, get it done a little bit quicker. Fast track, I think we're already on the, on the mend of that. Uh, let's see, branding, we've talked about branding with, with Commissioner, uh, Councilmember August. Parks and Rec in-house, we, uh, we're exploring that already. I'd like to explore a, a possibly purchasing land for regional park, um, for regional events, including, um, space for Menifee's legacy events like our 5K, things like that. Over in public works, um, I'd like to explore a traffic management system with cameras that record and store data. I've had instances on, on properties out here where it'd be great to have a camera if there was, uh, you know, an incident or, or somebody was, you know, doing these donuts, for instance. We could get them on camera every time. Also helps with the traffic management. We can get, you know, public crews out there quicker if there is traffic buildup and we can help mitigate some of the traffic issues. Mr. Johnson, we talked about, uh, the pavement management plan. I still would like to get a meeting with you on that to find out where we are headed with that. Infrastructure financing districts, uh, that's something I know that we're gonna be looking into. Sidewalk connectivity, that's, that's on a project-by-project basis, I understand that, but I wanna, I wanna stay focused on it. Graffiti abatement in-house, uh, that was something I, that I thought about a long time ago. You know, we had the graffiti busters that was working county-wide and, and that's since been disbanded. I think it was put up, put together by E D A. If we had that service in-house, we could contract it out to other cities that don't have it as well. And, uh, it could be a, a cost, uh, it could pay for itself, basically. Bradley Crossing, Holland Crossover, we've all talked, we've all talked about that. And then I, I'm not sure where we stand on speed surveys. The reason I added this on here was because I had overheard Officer Berry talking at the Menifee Missing Link about the inability to enforce the speed limit on Menifee Road because the speed survey was not done. So I wanted to.
They've all been completed.
They've all been completed. How often do they need to be updated?
Every two years, I believe.
Okay.
Is that correct? Yeah, we did it last year.
Did it last year. So we're on track. And we're on track. We have that like, you know, reminder on your calendar to update those all the time. Transparency-wise, um, public noticing for projects, uh, large projects. City of Temecula, I know other cities do it as well. You have a specific plan, a general plan amendment, tentative parcel map, tentative track map, things like that. The, uh, property owner puts a big sign on the property and says, you know, public hearing on this date and it's a couple of weeks in advance. Just more public noticing. People are always saying, I mean, we heard this on the planning commission hundreds of times, I never knew this was happening, we never knew this was coming. And, you know, gosh, there's a big yellow four-by-eight sheet of plywood in front of the property. Then you, you know, you pretty much have to be blinded and I missed that one. Not sure if we have a P I O or Public Relations Department.
I, I would be the P I O and we do have a, uh, organization, Connect Communications, that does our public relations.
Okay.
They do our Menifee Matters newsletter, our E-newsletter and our press releases.
One of my campaign promises was town hall meetings in my district. I wanted to discuss if that was something we could do by district or if it was just something I was gonna do on my own or.
We'd be happy to help you with that.
Yeah.
Anytime.
If, and if the other council is, is interested as well, I'd encourage it. Active links to the, uh, to the budget, is that readily available on the websites, things like that?
Yes. Under Finance Department.
Okay. Fabulous. Quail Valley Sewer, been pretty redundant about that one. Re-alignment of Holland Road at Marietta. Had my eye on that as well as the mayor and has suggested. There's a lot of residents in, in Lake Elsinore that could be shopping in Menifee. If that road was realigned better, we had some, some larger setbacks and, you know, and a better connection for the Z. I'd like to discuss a grandfathering policy for the businesses, um, with little or no impact as, as we move forward. And when I say little or no impact, I mean, traffic impacts, things like that. There's people that. You know, there's, there's businesses like, like daycares and things like that, you know, that have been grand, that have been here forever. Businesses in the rural area that, uh, that have very little impacts and we might figure out a way to grandfather some of those things. I'd like to explore having a rural advisory committee and, um, champion the policies that affect the rural property owners, some of the code enforcement issues and, uh, again, the design guidelines. And, uh, just in general, less contract, more in-house. I know it's kind of a lot, but like I said, it's kind of a brain dump, so.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lees Meyer. I did have a conversation with Mr. Edgerton. He wanted me to share a couple of items for District Three, if you'd like me to do those now since we're going in order.
Absolutely.
He would like to continue, uh, the review and improving the policies regarding the home-based businesses. That's now at, um, it's actually the Rural Business, uh, Ordinance, which is now at Planning Commission, so that's good. Review and discuss the implementation of code enforcement, the difference between the rural versus the tract areas. I think that's becoming a theme tonight. Discuss legal non-conforming uses, those applies to businesses versus, uh, real estate. So a little bit of those older, uh, folks that have been in our community for a long time. He, he likes the economic incentive that they bring and. he likes the economic incentive that they bring, and would like us to look at the legal non-conforming issues. Continue to review the policy and ordinance regarding provisional business licenses. I think we're doing that again through the Rural Business License Program that we're trying to adopt, so he's right on point. Completion of the Holland Road overpass is a high priority for him and his district. And finally, continue the landscape enhancement plans for our major arterials. Those were his items for tonight. On to- What am I thing here, sorry. Mayor Protem Denver.
Counsel, I got a chance to look at most of what all you were going to say, and knew that I was number four, so, except for the mayor, I would be your last one. So, I, these are just, I agree with most of what is being said, and I don't want to repeat what has all been said, with maybe the, I would like to emphasize the code enforcement. It's very, very important, particularly in my district, but in the whole city, that we at least have four code enforcement officers with proactive attitude, and that we clean up some of the problems in our town and get it actively done. I think that's slowly happening, but I'd like to encourage that, and it's been said before. Romaland is my area, and it needs to be focused on. The reason I'm not going to spend too much time on it being ignored by the county before us, and to some degree us now, is that it's about to change with the Line A and all the development that's going to happen here in the next year and a half or so. Frankly, it's going to be the center of the universe for, I think, for Menifee for a while, until it builds out. So, things are going to change, and the kinds of suggestions that I would propose now are going to be different than what the developers are going to propose, and that the residents, which I will think the average sale price, although some disagree with me, I say the average sale price in Romaland of the new homes is going to be $400,000. And it's going to be a whole different clientele, and I think they're going to have some different opinions than what I or we may have now. Also, I'd like to encourage, one more time, the McCall overpass. That needs, that's going to be a real issue, and it needs to be focused on even more. We need to be more business-friendly, and we need to focus on a downtown with a legacy of what it means to be from Menifee. The economic development, I've spoken again for, I want to say it one more time, with the McCall I-215 interchange as soon as possible. Develop a McCall medical corridor planning area. That is going to be left off, I think, of the new development happening up in Romaland, and if we don't put a stamp down on it, I think you're going to see development go right over that interchange and that street if we don't do something. Create an entryway monuments along McCall. Basically, what I'm saying is, we've done an awful lot, and I understand why, in downtown Sun City area, but the rest of the town's been kind of ignored, and I would like Romaland to have monuments. In terms of public safety, just to agree with everybody, increase public staffing in one form or another, whether we'd have our own police department, whether we'd go with some other city, whether we have what we have now, and somehow be able to afford to increase the police, and in particular, the fire department. Proactive, I've spoken twice now, proactive code enforcement throughout our city, and uniformity and compliance of the city sign ordinance program, which somehow got ignored. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. Okay, I'm up, I'm not going to take too much time, you can read these for yourself, but there, I don't think there's anything on here that hasn't really been stated. The commonality between what we'd like to see is pretty amazing, and it really follows economic development, public safety, policy setting, et cetera. I'd like us to review at some point, or staff to review, and see if, see if you have all the tools in your toolbox that you need for continued economic development with the development plan and the business incentive ordinance. Trade zones for those three areas. What I'm talking about there and thinking about there is, what specialized incentives can we create for those specific areas that are not currently in our business incentive ordinance? Don't know how we get there, I'm not an expert in it, but there's got to be a way. In post-2011, when all the RDAs went away, there's got to be a way to revitalize those and get some incentives. Financial, two-year budget cycle, don't know if we can get there. CIP review and update, I think that's what we're doing right now, this is part of that process. Keep the special reserves in place that are already there. I know, the city manager, you got a staffing plan that you're trying to go for, you just, you know, it's all about money. Public safety, next page, same thing, amazing, same ideas here. Try to get to the ratio for residents, add code, add fire, all of it takes money, and I know that there's some, all the contract cities in the county were given some bad news last week about increases, so, I don't know, I just don't know how we get there. A facilities master plan, here's really where I think that we can start exploring some ideas for the future, and I hope that you, at the end of the day, that you support some of these ideas through the staff, is, you know, we've got some cash on our balance sheet, don't know if we need to operationalize it, or if we even should, but, you know, let's take advantage of the current market real estate prices and see if we can't buy some land for a future city yard, or animal shelter, even if we just buy it and hold it, it'll be less, it'll be cheaper to buy today than it will be 10 years, 15 years, or 20 years while we're getting there. All this stuff on here is what everybody else has already said, next slide. Policy setting, we talked about that a little bit. I think we need to review our reserve policy and where it's at. If we continue to take the hits that we take hit on our, just, contract with law enforcement and fire, it does keep going up, and there are valid reasons why it keeps going up, but to pay for some of the manpower that we all seem to want here, maybe we need to explore that reserve and see if we don't operationalize some of those dollars. Annexation and the sphere of influence, I think this is an important thing for the future. We need to seriously look at this with the LAFCO and see, there are some specific plans east of town where our eastern border, which is Briggs Road, bifurcates those specific plans, so a developer or an applicant has to come through the county and the city to process a plan, and I think that we need to fix that. Oh, the Valleywide Park and Rec, that's in progress. LAFCO already gave unanimous approval to start divesting from that. That was a LAFCO decision, not a Menifee city-driven thing. I think we should have a serious discussion someday about maybe doing a fire JPA with some surrounding cities. I'd mentioned this last year, and I think in our, did, Mr. Johnson, did you ever come up with an idea or a going dark in the month of July? Is that something that you and staff support? To give staff more time to have vacations and decompress in the summertime? Or are we doing it right and having two meetings a month?
I wholeheartedly support that, so I can take a vacation.
Yeah. Well, it's important. As we continue to get larger, quality of life for staff is an important thing, I think that would help. But I, you know, if we got support for that, we can bring that back later. Oh, we already did the Parks and Recs, open space and trails, and that's in progress, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Menifee fireworks ordinance, I'm glad the fire chief's not here, he probably don't like this idea, but in the state of California, by municipal ordinance, we can allow sales of non-explosive fireworks from June 28th to July 6th. A lot of surrounding cities do it. There's a way where nonprofits can get involved and have some of the revenues from them, and so, I'd like us to explore that idea. If it fails, oh, well, but maybe that's something that we can do down the road. Next page. Everything on here has already been talked about, and is on the CIP list that you said, Mr. Manager. So, that completes my list.
Question, Mr.?
Yes.
Now, one thing you mentioned that really piques my interest is the purchase of land, so could you just tell us about where we are in annexation of any property east of Briggs, and how we get perhaps a borrowing plan to buy land for the city? Did you, anybody address that?
I defer, I'll defer to Mr. Johnson, I think he's been exploring some of those options just out of the natural course of managing a city.
It's not a matter of buying land, it's a matter of going to LAFCO and proving that we have the financial wherewithal to provide services to that particular area. So, we typically, what you do is a financial study through LAFCO, they make a determination that, yes, you can, no, you can't. If it's yes, you can, then you carve that piece out, and you go through a process of annexation through their board to get that approval. The one issue that's kind of out there is this VLF issue. It did wipe out the annexations and the new cities. However, there is a bill that was introduced again, is it SB 25?
Yeah.
I think it's SB 25. Hopefully, that will be in the budget. We're not holding our breath, we're trying to move on, but it'd be great to get an additional-
Four and a half million dollars back.
Four and a half million dollars back.
Every year.
Every year, in perpetuity. So, if that's something you're really interested in doing, we can send a letter to LAFCO and show our interest, but that would need to come back to council, I believe, for discussion and ratification.
What is, is that the only land we're talking about acquiring, or is there land within the city that we can acquire?
Okay, so there's two different options. The annexation would be any property or land that's outside the city's current city boundaries, and that's a LAFCO process. The other is for us to identify land that's available for purchase, is that your other question?
Yes.
And is there land available for purchase in Menifee? Yes, there is. And I'm certain that we can locate several pieces of property that may be of interest to us for a corporation yard, for any number of options for us.
So, Mr. Mayor, when will, at the next meeting, perhaps tomorrow or the following meeting, and if I get some help from staff, can I agendize that, or would it be premature to do that?
No, I think we can, if I can consult with Mr. Melching for just a second, I think we're talking about workshop, we're talking about giving some direction to staff tonight with this process. Would it be appropriate tonight to give staff direction to explore real estate purchases down the road? Give the city manager and staff the authority to explore those things, and then, as real property deals come forward, they have to go into closed session anyway, and they'll be agendized that way. So, is it appropriate for us just to give the manager the authority to explore?
Mayor, I venture to say that the consensus of the council has been communicated to the city manager, and he would bring it back in the normal course, understanding what the council's objectives are based on the outcome of this workshop.
All right. And with respect to the sphere of influence thing, there is a difference between annexation and sphere of influence. I think at a minimum, we need to do the sphere of influence thing, because what that does is, those 16,000 housing units that are outside our eastern border, we, they have to submit their plans through Mr. Brady's department for review, do they not? When we have a sphere of influence.
Yes.
And so, I think at a minimum, we need to do that, because we're spending, we're doing all this long-range planning, we've got a CIP already established, and if we don't watch what's going on, that CIP is gonna, it's gonna be not worth anything in about 15 years, if we don't watch what we're doing, or watch what others are doing. Mr. Denver?
Another thing that was stated here by each of us, and some of us more than once, is the code enforcement. One was the issue of proactivity, and the second one was to hire that fourth code enforcement officer. I'd like to have the city come back to us with a plan of how we're going to get enough funding to accomplish that, or whether we can or we can't. In other words, it's already in our budget to do it, and-
Not in our budget.
It absolutely was.
It was approved, but it was turned down because of the budget.
It's an approved position that's unfunded.
Right.
So, if I were to be able to find money, I could hire that position.
We could take it as far, I think it's important enough, of course, we haven't had this discussion, but I think it's important enough to take it out of reserves. I think it's that important. I think it's, I think it's one of those things that needs to be done, and I'd like to move it up the priority list amongst all the other things. Certainly, it's more important than buying land for a, putting our trucks in 20 years from now. That's correct, Mr. Denver, but I feel there's a more pressing need in community and economic development, so if we're going to fill a position, that would be where I would fill the position, and not in code enforcement. So, there is, what I'm saying, there's a difference of opinion on this, so I don't want to, I want to have a discussion on that, rather than-
Okay. So, city manager, could you go back to my slide number two, I think it's on slide number two, which would be slide number 26, I think? Back up one more. I know you have vision for your staffing plan going forward, and as, you know, dollars are tight, or dollars are restored, or dollars are gleaned from revenue through sales tax and property tax through economic development, are you, do you have a plan in mind for long-range hires that you could make as part of, or give us an idea of a roadmap? Or do you want to do that as part of the budget process, it's currently under development?
We could do it two different ways. It's really, it really comes down to what our financial picture looks like.
Yeah.
We do, if we move into an area where we're building up our community services department because we're making a change there, then we'll need to, we'll need to move some folks into that department, which, more than likely, a lot of that won't come out of the general fund. So, that's kind of, just to let you know, as we move forward, that's kind of apples and oranges. But I have identified probably at least five positions that it would be really important for us to bring on. Unfortunately, we're in an interesting position right now, after six years of cityhood, and I would rather be, and I've been, as conservative as I possibly can as we move forward, as you know, we have 46 staff for 48 square miles, so, we're very lean and very mean, and you can see the bags under all of our eyes, but we do a lot with less, and getting more help, and I'm so encouraged to hear this, that, you know, we'll make a way for that. I do like the idea of changing our, changing our policy as well for our unrestricted, our restricted funding. We have an interesting policy of, you know, 25%, 28%, 30%, we have all these benchmarks, and we're sweeping funds into these different areas. I think if we, if we adjusted that, it may put us in a better position moving forward.
Are you officially asking for that from the council tonight?
Yes, I am.
Counsel, is there any objection to give the city manager and his team the authority to develop those recommendations?
I think developing, developing, it's fine, but the number from 28 or 30 down to zero, it would be interesting to, I assume you're going to be discussing the exact level and giving its choices.
I would venture to guess it wouldn't, it wouldn't be zero. It probably wouldn't be lower than 20%. Bruce over there might be feeling shocked right now, but we can have a conversation and come back with what we think is an equitable number.
Manna from heaven.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, where, if we vote on something to approve, what does that mean, where's that going to take us, and what should Mr. Denver and I be looking at if we have, are we looking at two positions, five positions, or what?
Well, without knowing the number that we're looking at, I can't tell you what positions we would, but of the five that I'm thinking of, they're, each one is included in what you've requested. So, there's three other positions that I would, that I'd venture to say, but I don't want to let those out of the bag now, in case they don't come to fruition.
Thank you.
So, we will see this, though, we'll see your recommendations ultimately as part of the budget process.
I would love to include that in part of the budget process, and Bruce is now having a big sigh of relief, I think, on that number moving down.
Okay. So, at least we know what the first two are.
Yes.
And so, what we also heard, I hope you just heard, that we need, we're going to need you to staff out a new reserve policy for us to consider. Okay? Is that what you heard?
Yes.
The other one that was spoken by each of us was public safety. We really have to have a discussion about this increasing, unusually increasing cost of police and fire, and we're going to have to have a discussion about how we're going to continue to have a safe community. We really need that discussion, and we need to figure out how we're going to do this. It's, as chairman of the Safety Committee, I'm coming back with proposals, I want to come back with proposals for more police, and for a new, obviously, we're going to do a new fire department. to do a new fire department. The problem is, is that I don't see the place for the money here yet. I don't see anybody, I don't see, even with the changes in the reserves, I don't see the, the proposal for the money. And if we ever get to the point where our police per, per person goes down, or, God forbid, the crime rate goes up, we are really in trouble. So we need, this is one of the highest priorities, and we're not spending enough time talking about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Real quick. And I, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Denver, but I have a, something Mr. Edgar Tern and I spoke to a long time ago, and if Mr., the mayor brought it up tonight, we would like to have one officer per thousand population in the city. So, understanding what you're talking about, but if it's based on population, then why don't we look, at least consider density, you know, density, 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 you know, people living, coming in to move in here, density as it relates to cost per thousand of people, higher density versus medium density versus lower density. I think we should also factor that in when we come, when we consider development. That's another way of getting the cost per those police officers down. And I'm only saying it should be part of the pie and part of the conversation.
So as we go forward with this process, Mr. Johnson, is it your intention then to take all of these input items, see where the commonality is from all of us, and present us with another listing that we can say, okay, this is more important than the other, or how do you want, want to proceed with this? Or do you have enough information, do you have enough commonality that you can just execute?
Yeah, I was hoping that I could come back with what I believed I heard and understood, and then you can make revisions to that, or, or believe in that and stamp that. And then we would come back on a quarterly basis and, and do a revision or, or do a, a discussion at a council meeting of, so that we can get direction right at that council meeting, and it can be, you know, motion approved, move, you know, bless you, move forward. On a quarterly basis, updating all of the things that we're talking about now, whether it be, we pick economic development under one quarterly event, policy, infrastructure, public safety, or we take all of them at the same time. I believe I can form a matrix with what has happened tonight.
Great. Any other comments from staff or council? Are we, are we at a point where we can wrap up, or do you have anything else for us?
I have no other items.
Anybody else?
No, we're pretty good.
Is everybody comfortable with what we've done? I think we've got a lot of good ideas, and it's just really a matter of prioritizing them and funding, funding them, frankly.
That's the bottom line, right? I mean, it's, it's, you know, and, and like I said, too, there, there's, there's some things that I don't know all about, so I'll probably be getting with the city manager here soon and, you know, understanding a little bit more about how our contracts work with, with police and fire. But certainly, there has to be a better way to get more bang for our buck, so I'd love to, love to have that discussion, but in general, I'm, I'm good.
Well, I think with respect to the funding aspect of all this, I think it's important, and I'd like to share this, this would be my wrap-up comment, and then I would, I don't have anything else to share, is that I think it's important for us to get down these ideas, so that when you talk about the CIP program, we recognize all the things that need, we and staff and everybody's input, we recognize what the things that needed to be done in the city are. And if we can put them in our CIP and label them unfunded, or, or this like, or this is the next project that's coming in line, put a fiscal year out there, you know, whatever, just some kind of roadmap, so that we stay on task with those types of things. And so I think this process is, it was very helpful to me in that regard. All right, hearing no-
Mr. Mayor, my, my guy out there for the 40-acre park, he walked in late, but he did show up, Mr. Croix, so.
Oh, very good. We'll take, we'll, we'll eminent domain his ranch.
Right, exactly.
And, and build the park right there. How about that, Rick? Or, or you, or you can leave it, you can will it to the city. All right, hearing no other comments tonight. Great job on the workshop. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.